Alrighty, well, welcome everyone to the inauguration ceremony for 2025 here. If we could begin by all rising here for the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alrighty, we'll officially call this meeting to order at 5:47 and we'll begin by turning things over to Madam Clerk here and then with the invocation by Father Mark Garanski here, so. Oh, I apologize, I got ahead of myself, we need the roll call first, so.
Von Kruks?
Here.
Benedetti?
Here.
Kiowaattan?
Present.
Hornbeck?
Here.
Peruggi?
Here.
Rodriguez?
Here.
Rezepa?
Here.
Quorum present, Mayor Rezepa.
Thank you very much. Alright, and Father Mark, feel free to take the podium.
Or he can come down here.
This prayer was used at the inauguration of George Washington in 1789. Almighty and eternal God, you have revealed your glory to all the nations, God of power and might, wisdom and justice. Through you, authority is rightly administered, laws are enacted, and judgment is decreed. Let the light of your wisdom direct the deliberations of this city council and shine forth in all its proceedings, and laws framed for our rule and government, may they seek to preserve peace, promote national happiness, continue to bring us the blessings of liberty and equality. Finally, Lord, we likewise commend to your unbounded mercy all the citizens of the United States that we may be blessed in the knowledge and sanctified in the observance of your holy law. May we be preserved in union in that peace which the world cannot give, and after enjoying the blessings of this life, be admitted to those which are eternal. We pray to you who are Lord and God forever and ever. Amen.
Thank you very much. Alright, Madam Clerk, we'll turn it over to you here.
Thank you. I'll start off with Dora. Dora, if you'd like to come up forward here, please. And who did you bring with you?
My dear friend Crystal, and she's also a Trenton resident.
Alright, I'm going to have you wear this because this works better than our mic there.
Got to sign over there. Yes.
All good? Perfect, thank you. Thank you. Okay, so next I'm going to call on Rick Benedetti. Rick, I'm going to have you come right over here by these two mics and hopefully it'll sound better there. And then Tricia, would you like to hold the Bible? Okay, so put your tuckey on this one, and then raise your right hand and repeat after me. I solemnly swear?
I solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this state?
And the Constitution of this state.
And I will faithfully perform?
I will faithfully perform.
The duties of councilman?
The duty of councilman.
In and for the city of Trenton?
In and for the city of Trenton.
County of Wayne?
County of Wayne.
State of Michigan?
State of Michigan.
According to the best of my abilities?
According to the best of my abilities.
So help me God.
So help me God.
No, this is my wife.
I need you to sign a couple things as well.
My grandson didn't want to come.
He's seen it a few times.
He's 14.
Okay, Rick, you're going to sign right here. And right here. Awesome, thank you. Alright, and then I'll call up Timber. Timber Von Kruks?
Just use my chair. My sister.
Hi, Robin.
Hi.
Okay, Robin, if you want to hold the Bible, Timber, put your left hand on the Bible and raise your right. Stand back just one step so we can hear you well. I solemnly swear?
I solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this state?
And the Constitution of this state.
And that I will faithfully perform?
And I will faithfully perform?
The duties of councilwoman?
The duties of councilwoman.
In and for the city of Trenton?
In and for the city of Trenton.
County of Wayne?
County of Wayne.
State of Michigan?
State of Michigan.
According to the best of my ability?
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you so much. And I just do need to sign one thing.
Okay.
Awesome.
Great.
Thank you.
Well, congratulations again to our three not necessarily new but newly re-elected council members. So, great job, gave all. Looking forward to all the next four years. So, this is where you do get the remarks portion, though. So, if Councilwoman Rodriguez, if there's anything you want to say, and do something a little bit, the floor is all yours.
I will make it quick, like I always do. I'd like to thank all the voters for coming out. I also would like to thank my wonderful friends over here, Crystal Davis and Chad. I really appreciate you coming out and all my other friends that are also here, Darren, Zach, Aiden, I appreciate it. And I'm really looking forward to continue the work that we've been doing here in the city of Trenton, and I'm excited. I'm excited for this next term. Thank you, appreciate it.
Congratulations, Councilwoman, thank you. Councilwoman Von Kruks?
Yep, I'd just like to say thank you to all the residents, the voters, and this is my favorite thing in the world to do is to be here. And I'm so glad that the residents believed in us again, and I'm very honored to serve with this council on this side and that side. We do a great job for the city, and I'm just so proud to be here, proud to serve another four years, and thank you to our state Senator Darren Camilleri for coming down. You're always a shining light here, and all the residents and the department heads, thank you to everybody for all you do for the community. I really like it. And Mayor, thank you for what you do, because a lot of times you don't get the credit you deserve because everything's done, you know, behind the scenes sometimes, but you do a great job for the city of Trenton, for sure. And Debbie, you are unmistakably the best thing in the world. You run a beautiful election and make it seamless for all of us.
Thank you.
And yep, I'd just like to say thank you to you and your group of people that serve for you. So, other than that, I'll make it, that was quick because I can be, and thank you all for coming, thank you. And thank you to my sister for coming, and my friend Lynn Leggett, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Congratulations again, Councilwoman.
Thanks.
Councilwoman Benedetti?
Thank you, Mayor. I know you said we all had five minutes total, so I think they used up my whole five minutes, but I want to thank the residents, like they said, without them doing this, we can't do this. So, they supported us to be here again, and like Timber said, I think we're moving, and Dora said, I think we're moving in the right direction. We've accomplished a lot of things in the last four years, but also the four years before that, too. So, I just want to thank everybody, I want to thank my wife for coming out tonight, Senator Camilleri for coming out, his support and his knowledge sometimes when I have questions, and the things that he's done for us as a community in Downriver, and the rest of the council and the mayor. I think we do work together well, and I hope we keep doing that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman, and congratulations, too. So, any of you guys have anything?
I would just like to congratulate all three on returning back, and I always had, it's always been a pleasure to work with each and every one of you and look forward to continuing that relationship and working together to have a bigger, better Trenton. So, thank you.
Alright, well, we will, I'll take a motion to adjourn at 5:59 for the ceremony here, and then we'll have refreshments and such out in the lobby. If council can hang back here for a minute just so we can take our picture, but then, yeah, we'll head out to the lobby before we reconvene for the regular meeting at 7:00. So, moved and supported for adjournment at 5:59 for the ceremony. Alright, if we could all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, we'll call this meeting to order at 7:04 PM. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Von Kruks?
Benedetti?
Here.
Kiowaattan?
Present.
Hornbeck?
Here.
Peruggi?
Here.
Rodriguez?
Here.
Rezepa?
Here.
Quorum present, Mayor Rezepa.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Mayor, I make a motion to excuse Councilwoman Von Kruks.
Support. Moved and supported to excuse Councilwoman Von Kruks. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Next, we have the minute approval of the November 3 regular meeting.
It's all moved.
Alright, moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Thank you all. First, we have under Presentations and Proclamations, we'll have Chief Hawkins, oh, there isn't there. Chief Hawkins, come on down. We've got a couple awards and some new hires to introduce, so if we could get a motion to make this part of the regular meeting?
Move, support.
Moved, supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll let Chief Hawkins take it from here.
Is it on?
Yes.
The microphone's on up there.
Alright, hopefully you can hear me.
Tonight, grateful to bring down two lieutenants who are receiving an award for Staff of Command participation. Bring down Lieutenant Scott Stadler, Lieutenant Greg Brewster, if you want to come down and so the millions of viewers can see you.
Tens of us.
So, Staff of Command for Executive Leadership is a nine-week program stretched over nine months that requires dedication and commitment. It's over 360 hours of training from instructors that come from all over to teach leadership and other aspects of police supervision. Both lieutenants graduated from class number 42, and both completed research projects on topics relevant and helpful to the department. I would let them speak on that, but they decided they would let me speak on that. So, Lieutenant Brewster handled the appropriate holster for the Trenton Police Department. This council approved new handguns several years ago, and at the time, there weren't many options available, so Lieutenant Brewster, who was in charge of the firearms program, wanted to find the holster that was secure, reliable, but yet easy to use, and won a research award, I believe, for his work on that, and will be sitting down to implement his findings probably after the first of the year. So, congratulations to Lieutenant Brewster. Lieutenant Stadler did his research on something that we've wanted for a while, and it ties in with the new station, with our new community use room. He did his presentation on implementing a citizens' police academy to teach not only all the residents of Trenton, but some of the council, what goes on on a daily basis and what police work is like. So, both of them are being awarded a pin for their work, and we wanted to congratulate them for a fine job at Staff of Command. So, thank you very much. Alright, the next thing we have, very excited to introduce two new employees, and I'll call them both up at the same time, so if Colin Slater and Mason Walls could come up. So, Colin is here, Mason here. Colin begins his career here in Trenton after attending Schoolcraft College where he played baseball and graduated from the academy. When we first interviewed him, we knew right away he was someone we wanted to hire. We just had to wait until he completed his time at Schoolcraft. I think at the time, he might have been 19 when he first interviewed. So, we are fortunate that he answered the phone when we called, when we had the opening, and we are very excited to have him attend the academy. Mason Walls is a Trenton graduate and resident, attended Mount Union out of high school to play football, and then returned home to finish his degree. Another outstanding interview and great person. Mason finished third overall in academics at the academy and third overall in firearms. Now, he claims he would have been first in firearms if the implemented holster, the new holster would have been in place. But, we'll get there, we'll have him retry. So, what we're going to do today, we're going to swear both these officers in. First, I'll do Colin, so we'll have you raise your right hand, and then we'll have your mother and father come up and they'll pin the badge on you, okay? You are 19, right? 19, okay. Not years old, 19 badge, alright, 1119. Alright. Raise your right hand, okay? On my honor?
On my honor.
I will never betray my badge?
I'll never betray my badge.
My integrity?
My integrity.
My character?
My character.
Or the public trust?
Or the public trust.
I will always have the courage?
I will always have the courage.
To hold myself?
To hold myself.
And others accountable for our actions?
And others accountable for our actions.
I will always uphold the Constitution?
I will always uphold the Constitution.
My community?
My community.
And the agency I serve?
And the agency I serve.
I do solemnly swear?
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this state?
And the Constitution of this state.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties?
And I will faithfully perform the duties.
Of the office of police officer?
And the office of police officer.
In and for the city of Trenton?
In and for the city of Trenton.
County of Wayne?
County of Wayne.
State of Michigan?
State of Michigan.
According to the best of my ability?
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
And Colin's mom and dad are going to come up and pin his badge on? Congratulations. We'll have you stay up here. So now, Mason? 16, got it, okay. Raise your right hand. On my honor?
On my honor.
I will never betray my badge?
I will never betray my badge.
My integrity?
My integrity.
My character?
My character.
Or the public trust?
Or the public trust.
I will always have the courage?
I will always have the courage.
To hold myself?
To hold myself.
And others accountable for our actions?
And others accountable for our actions.
I will always uphold the Constitution?
I will always uphold the Constitution.
My community?
My community.
And the agency I serve?
And the agency I serve.
I do solemnly swear?
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this state?
And the Constitution of this state.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties?
And that I will faithfully perform the duties.
Of the office of police officer?
Of the office of police officer.
In and for the city of Trenton?
In and for the city of Trenton.
County of Wayne?
County of Wayne.
And state of Michigan?
And state of Michigan.
According to the best of my ability?
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. They did practice in the hallway, so it makes it easier. And I know the council will probably want to shake your hands, and then they'll probably want to take some photos, they've got a lot of family here today, so we appreciate it. I want to thank the city administrator, I know many months ago, even years ago, we talked about filling some of the vacancies and how to do it, and going to get the academy sponsorships with something that you approved and this council approved, and I think it's paid dividends. We've got some outstanding, outstanding quality people. And also thank the officers who put the time in to train these men and women that we've had, we've had an influx of new people, and I'm sure they're very happy to get some extra bodies on the road. So, I'm sure the council want to say thank you, and then you guys are free to not stay for the rest of the meeting.
Alrighty, next item we have here is our, obviously equally as exciting, Plant Moran Audit Report. I was trying to gas it up earlier beforehand, still good news, important information, but obviously a tough act to follow. But yes, so we'll, if we get a motion to make this a part of the regular minute?
Part.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered, so we'll let you guys take it away from here. Oh, yeah, we'll have Debbie switch in just a second here, no worries. I'm afraid to touch any of those, so.
Not IT per se?
What's that?
Not IT per se.
Maybe, it has its gaps, I suppose, we'll put it that way. My own personal knowledge.
We do know how to clear a room like that. Certainly excited to be here, so my name is Bill Rook, he was Plant Moran, I'm a partner for the city and with me today is Mayor-
Associate Nate Sherb, and we're here to talk about the audit for the year ended June 30, 2025.
thirty, twenty twenty-five. When we talk about the audit, there's really three separate deliverables that we're going to briefly cover tonight. We have the financial statements, our report to mayor and council, and then finally the graph presentation, which we'll go through in just a moment. We have covered all these documents in detail with management, and our goal tonight is to provide you a high-level summary and certainly answer any questions that you may have related to the audit. Before we get started, just want to take a brief moment and really thank everyone in your controller's office, especially Jill, for all their hard work throughout the audit. They really do a great job preparing for it and helping us complete the audit in an efficient manner. Okay, yeah, a little echo. So before we get into graphs, the first item I want to touch on is really just our end of audit letter. So included in your package is a six-page. There we go. So included in the council packet is a six-page audit letter addressed to mayor and council. And really what that is, is a communication under the auditing standards related to the audit process itself. So this, if we had any issues or findings, they would be disclosed in that letter. I'm happy to report that we did not have any audit findings in the current year, so as you review that communication, it really just discusses our audit plan, how we completed the audit as we discussed before the audit, and we really don't have any internal control-related matters or other audit issues to discuss with you here tonight. The second section of that letter is really just legislative information, you know, really no big legislative issues coming through in the current year, but again, there are some items in there for your reference. Overall, the city continues to have strong internal controls, and your team does a great job maintaining the financial records for the city. So we're going to jump into the graph presentation. The first item we want to talk about here is the audit opinion. So really, as your auditors, the main deliverable we provide to you is our opinion on your financial statements. And if we really focus on that last paragraph there, the city did receive what we refer to as an unmodified audit opinion again in the current year, which essentially means the statements are in compliance with all the rules and regulations. We often refer to this as a clean audit opinion. So again, happy to provide that information here. So what we're going to do now is I'm going to turn it over to Nate, and we're going to go through some of the financial results for the city and really just highlight some of the key information that is included in that financial statement. So we understand the financial statements, you know, close to a hundred pages, so we're not going to go through all that, but we do want to highlight some of the significant matters that happened in the current year.
Hello, everybody. As Bill mentioned, my name is Nate Sherb, manager with Plant Moran on the audit, and I'm going to take you through some of the fun stuff here we got tonight. So first, we'll go through the general funds revenue for the year, and as you can see, revenue increased by about one point eight million, or seven percent, to twenty-seven point one million in the current year. And the city's largest source of revenue continues to be property taxes, which for the general fund accounted for seventeen point six million dollars, which was about a one point four million dollar increase over last year. The main driver of this, and we'll go more into this in a couple slides, was the increase in the city's taxable value, which was around seven percent for the year. You'll also see that federal and state sources of revenue increased by seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars. This was primarily due to the Michigan local retirement grant that was received in September of twenty twenty-four. And then finally, other revenue decreased by about five hundred thousand, which this decrease was due to a decrease in permit revenue fees. So next, we have the general fund expenditures, and in the current year, those were twenty-six point two million, which was an increase of two point two million dollars over last year, which is about a nine point two percent increase. But overall, the increase was in line with the increases in revenue. And in general, the city's cost structure remained consistent with the previous years, with public safety being the largest expenditure for the general fund, and the increases in that primarily related to capital projects and capital outlay. Here we have the general funds fund balance for the year, which increased to eleven point four million in the current year, and this is really made up of five components, which would be non-spendable, which is your prepaid and inventory restricted fund balance, committed fund balance, and assigned fund balance, and then the remaining fund balance is what we would call unassigned, and that's really for future appropriations, and that was five point six million dollars. So in general, that would cover about twenty-one percent of annual expenses. All right, so I mentioned earlier, we'd have a breakdown of property taxes for the city, and so this slide, what this slide shows is really how that eighteen million, eighteen point five million dollars, which is the whole government, not just the general fund, how those tax dollars break down. And so overall, the millage remained very consistent with last year, so as you can see that the increase really was driven by that increased taxable value. The solid waste, police and fire pension, and operating mills are reported in the general fund, and then the sewer debt and library millages are reported in their own separate funds. So here we have a history of the city's pension and OPEB, or retiree healthcare contributions, which did increase to seven point nine million during the year. The two primary places where that increased was the police and fire pension and the post-employment benefits OPEB plan. However, the city does continue to make all required contributions by state law. And then here on the final slide is just the funding of those pension and OPEB plans. So as you can see, the municipal employee retirement plan is at seventy percent funded, police and fire pension is at seventy-seven percent funded, and then the OPEB plan is at sixty-six percent funded. And one thing that I would like to point out is that that OPEB plan last year, if you remember over here, was much lower, is about forty percent funded. There was a significant number of decreases to the total OPEB liability, which is that estimate that the actuary calculates due to experience differences and healthcare trends that they were seeing for the city, which resulted in gains which decreased that total OPEB liability. So with that, thank you, and if you have any questions, we're happy to take them.
Great. Thank you guys very much. Tell you every year, I always appreciate good news, so that's always great. But I'll, you know, I frankly don't really have any questions here, seeing particularly the last slide, seeing those funding ratios continue to improve, and particularly the sixty-six percent OPEB liability. I can't imagine that's something that you guys see super often, so. If there's a, does council have any questions, anything like that? Councilman Perugi?
Yes, and the OPEB going from forty percent to sixty-six, is that a jump that you've seen somewhere else, or is this a one-off? Is it, I mean, this is fifty percent increase, so I'm just curious.
So a lot of that, again, had to do with the actuarial study that's performed, so they're constantly looking at what are the actual expenses being incurred for retiree healthcare for your retirees? And Nate and I were talking about it before the meeting, and we think a lot of it had to do with, you know, we're kind of out of the COVID era a little bit, and we think some of that really drove up those costs, and then they use those kind of two thousand, two thousand and one costs to project in the future. So now that we're out of that, their projections for what, those actual retiree healthcare costs came down, which reduced the liability and increased your funding. So I wouldn't expect to see any dramatic actuarial changes unless you make changes to benefits or something like that into the future, but we have seen that other places as well, these big, what they call experience differences in the actuary report, again, which increased the funding.
Thank you for the explanation.
Sure. Thank you, councilman. Anybody else? All right. Well, thank you guys again very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Alrighty. Next up here, we have public comment regarding items on today's agenda. This portion of public comment we'll have exclusively for items on the agenda and another opportunity for public comment later on in the meeting, and that's that anyone wishing to speak, please begins with their name and address, limit their comments to five minutes, and direct their questions through me. All right. Nothing on Zoom either. We'll keep on moving. We will go now for two items from the Thirty-third District Court, and so I will defer to our court delegate, Councilman Benedetti.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to receive and place on file the fines, costs, fees for October twenty twenty-five submitted by Thirty-third District Court, showing the city of Trenton receiving twelve thousand, one dollar and forty-five cents.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered.
Thank you, Mayor. Move to approve the Thirty-third District Court budget for the period of January first, twenty twenty-six through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six, as submitted.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Thank you.
Mayor, I'd also like to thank Councilman Perugi for attending the meeting for me because I had a work issue.
Great. Thank you very much, councilman. All right, we will now go to our city administrator. The first item we have from him is the asbestos abatement for VFW Post eighteen eighty-eight.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Before you have a proposal from BDS Environmental, this was vetted out through JS Fig, our contract manager for the police and fire station builds, and this is the same company that did the abatement at Trenton Motor Inn. So this is for the VFW Post one eight eight eight, and I'm asking for you to move to approve the proposal from BDS Environmental for testing an abatement at the former VFW site in the amount of forty-eight thousand, two hundred dollars in the interest of the city.
Almost. Support.
Part. Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Thank you. Next, from the city clerk, we have the proposed twenty twenty-six council meeting guidelines and schedule.
Thank you. So before you is the proposed meeting schedule for the year twenty twenty-six, and with all the council meetings being scheduled to be on the first and third Mondays of the month, unless there's a holiday, so in January, it was moved to Tuesday, January twentieth for Martin Luther King Day, February was moved to Tuesday, February seventeenth in honor of President's Day, and then the September meeting, Tuesday, September eighth, for Labor Day.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? And as always, I'm sure we'll have to shuffle one or two around in there throughout, but yes, it's a good starting point to have, so seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Thank you all. Next up, fresh off the audit here, city controller with the police and fire actuarial valuation.
So much exciting stuff comes out of our offices. So included in your packets was the June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five police and fire pension actuary evaluation, and that was prepared by Kavanaugh McDonald. This valuation report provides the annual required contribution that the city must fund for the pension plan. So our current year funding requirement is two million, eight hundred, thirty thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars, but beginning July first of twenty-six, it will decrease to two million, eight hundred and seven thousand, nine hundred and seventy-one dollars, which is a decrease of twenty-two thousand, seven hundred and nine dollars. So the unfunded accrued liability also decreased by one point three million, and our funded ratio increased from seventy-one point two percent in twenty twenty-four to seventy-three point five. That's with the smoothing of the interest rates. The market value, which is what the auditors use, it's seventy-six percent, which is what they had stated. So just looking for a motion to receive and place on file the twenty twenty-five police and fire actuarial valuation.
So moved. Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion there? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Thank you, Jill. All right. Our Parks and Recreation Director, Mr. Beaker, we have the Westfield Center lighting replacement.
Thank you, Mayor. As part of the ongoing renovations at the Westfield Center, we have solicited and received lighting replacement quotes for the following contractors: Metro Signs and Lighting, Envo Core, LMC Electric, Precision and Precision Electric. The quotes ranged as a wide variety of almost twenty-two thousand to almost a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. After review, LMC Electric submitted the lowest qualified bid at thirty-nine thousand, eight hundred and ninety-one dollars and fifty-one cents, and has the ability to mobilize immediately. Their proposal includes replacement, replacing of all the lighting throughout the entire Westfield building. I respectfully request the mayor and city council's approval to award the lighting replacement project to LMC Electric effective immediately. I also request authorization to spend up to a total of fifty-five thousand to add additional lighting and electrical outlets as needed throughout the renovation.
So moved. Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Thank you very much, Jill.
Thank you.
All right. So we do still have one more presentation, but unless there's any objection, I'll try and buy a little more. I can buy a little more time if you guys want. I could try and do a couple more minutes if you want, just if that's helpful at all, or. Okay, all right. Okay, just want to make sure, so, all right. Of course, of course. So we've got a late item here that we wanted to try and hopefully get some other folks involved, but anyhow, last week, or, I'm sorry, not last week. Last meeting. Oh, great timing, all right. Last meeting, we had, I got to hear about an exciting opportunity that a group was going to undertake over at Bloomingdale Cemetery. And so we have Peyton Kenny here to do a presentation to talk about the Veteran Headstone project, restoration project they did, and show some of the pictures and stuff, and it's some really awesome stuff. So we get a motion to make this a part of the regular meeting? Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered, so we'll have Debbie get this set up here. All right. So now let you flip it out in there. Great. So whenever you're ready, the floor is all yours, Miss Kenny.
All right. So for some of you guys who may not know me, I am Peyton Kenny. I am a senior at Trenton High School, and I decided to run an NHS project this year, and I called it Veteran Headstone Restoration Project. So a little bit of why I decided to do this was because originally I wanted to clean the entire cemetery, Bloomingdale Cemetery, and I realized that was really hard to do considering there's over two thousand headstones and graves there. So I thought a good way to honor people there was honoring the veterans that have served our country and were buried at Bloomingdale. Originally, I thought there was around seventy headstones. There are actually a little over a hundred, which I wasn't expecting, but I was very happy to be able to honor those veterans. So I tied it to being veterans because my grandfather is a veteran, and I wanted to honor the people who served our country and made sure they weren't forgotten. Some of the sponsors that made this happen, because I did not have the funds to make it happen all by myself, was the Enforcers Motorcycle Club, which provided a great sum of money to help me get the supplies that were needed, and for expert heating cooling, Mr. Angelotti, he also provided some money, and Trenton Sons Allegiance provided the flags to re-flag the graves that were already there. There were only about forty flags there, so a lot were missed, a lot were torn, a lot were old, so I wanted to re-honor them. And then Elliot's Bakery, they provided four dozen donuts and three gallons of hot chocolate for all the students that volunteered. And then I'd also like to thank the city of Trenton because you guys did hook up water for me and bring me recycling bins and trash bins, and it really was great because I got in contact with Kevin Sargent, who helped me out a lot, and without that, it would have been a mess. But, so here are all the kids' names. There are a lot of them, about thirty of them. Some were actually foreign exchange students, one from Germany, one from Italy, two kids from Flat Rock, and here are some photos of the kids hard at work. They took the time out of their Saturday morning at ten AM to come for two hours and really put in the work to clean these headstones of people they don't even know. It was forty degrees, it was cold, but they came out and they made an effort. Here are some of the results. The tops are befores and the bottoms are afters. As you can see, you couldn't really read the names, see who they are before, but even though they're not perfect, because that's really. But even though they're not perfect, because that's really hard to do, and we are no professionals, they were able to be read and looked at. Here are just some more results. I was shocked with how well it went because some of these were not readable. Some honorable mentions I do have were I could not find two of the veterans. There was a guy named Annie Connor who lived in Trenton. He passed in nineteen oh seven and served in the Civil War. And then there was also Julius Kohler, who served in World War Two in the Navy. And in the center, you can see two photos. It is a headstone that was standing. It's probably around three feet tall, but it ended up sinking into the ground so much that you couldn't even really read it anymore. So we dug it out a little bit to be able to read it, to just see who it was. And that's what we got, but we couldn't go much farther or move it or anything. And then another honorable mention I do have is Earl Arthur Frederick. He served in World War One, passed in nineteen sixty-seven. He was buried next to his wife, Edna. Now, he is really mentioned because if I didn't know he was buried next to Edna, I never would have found him. He was under four inches of grass and dirt, just the ground. We took a shovel because we knew he was right next to her, and we figured with the spacing, and we hit his headstone immediately. And we dug it out. And if you can see, the top right photo is the grassroots that grew into his lettering. So obviously was years of buildup. And we cleaned him up and we honored him. And without knowing that he was there, you never would have known, you never would have had him honored or anything. So I just really wanted to show what the students did and how it was a great project to honor the veterans here in Trenton.
Awesome. Well, round of applause for you. Like, that was such a cool idea. And I mean, just the pictures of it goes just a fraction of the justice for all the work that you guys put into. It looks unbelievable. It really does. And I think it's a testament to you for not only putting that together, but even the list of names of people that you were able to bring together to help out to do it too. So I just want to say thank you on behalf of all of us up here certainly. And frankly, on behalf of the families of people that, you know, will never be able to say thank you for doing what you did there. So that's just very cool. And any other cool ideas you have, we're always happy to say yes to. So thank you again. I don't know if anyone from council has anything that they want to add, or Councilwoman Rodriguez.
Thank you so much. What a cherished opportunity. Really appreciate it.
Yeah, it was a lot of work, but it ended up turning out great.
Yeah, that's awesome. Cool.
Thank you, guys.
Well, thank you again very much, Peyton. We appreciate it. A round of applause. And we won't make you stay either, but.
Oh, we're making our dad stay.
All right, perfect, perfect. All right, so next up here, we're closing out soon shortly anyway. We've got dispersments and statements and reports, and so I will defer to our Mayor Protem, Councilwoman Hornbeck this time here.
Thank you, Mayor. Move to approve the authorized dispersments on November twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-five in the amount of three million, four hundred and twenty-nine thousand, one hundred and sixty-four dollars.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none is unanimously so ordered. Thank you. And then reports as well.
All right, move to approve financial summary, October thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five. Schedule of investments and cash on hand, October thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five. City Beautiful Commission Minutes, October first, two thousand and twenty-five. City Commission Minutes, October sixth, two thousand and twenty-five. DDA Minutes, October ninth, two thousand and twenty-five. Historical Commission Mission, Historical Commission Minutes, October thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Library Governing Board Minutes, September third, two thousand and twenty-five. Traffic Safety Commission Minutes, October first, two thousand and twenty-five. And the Police Department Monthly Report, October twenty twenty-five.
Support.
Moved and supported there. Any further discussion? Seeing none is unanimously so ordered. Thank you. Going on to other council business now, just a couple of things on my end, just very briefly. And I don't, I don't know if any of the other council members were planning on bringing it up, so I don't want to steal any thunder. But do want to relay to anyone watching at home that did have some conversations with multiple folks at Wayne County and our county commissioner about the King Road and Grange intersection. They did commit that they will be doing a traffic study at that intersection to assess feasibility of, you know, whatever might, solutions might be able to come about. So we'll probably see folks out there continuously and have more information there that we'll certainly share as soon as we can. So that will be, that was one thing. And then addition to that, I feel like there was something else I was supposed to jot down. But additionally, I do just want to say congratulations again to Councilwoman Rodriguez, Councilman Benedetti. And even though she's not here, Councilwoman Bond Crooks too on your reelection. So looking forward to all that you guys will continue to accomplish for the next four years. So congratulations and very well deserved to you all. Other than that, I, that's all I've got for right now. So we'll start things off with Councilman Benedetti this evening.
Well, thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the kind words. I do again want to thank the citizens for re-electing me. I hope they're happy with what we're doing. I think we're stepping in the right directions and getting things moved into the future around here. And I think that's due to your leadership and deans and the department heads. Everybody's buying into what the goal is, and I think that's what we needed for years. And I appreciate that. To Peyton and her dad and her mom and everybody, you guys did a great job. I did hear another story, Peyton, that your dad almost laid out there in the snow the next day. So luckily, he didn't hit anything, but he went back the next day to even try to find some more stuff and do some more work. And I do, I think that's a great thing you guys did, and I hope someone takes after you so we can keep doing these things. And anything we can do, I'm glad that Kevin was a big help to you. He does do great things for his department and the city. So it is awesome to see that. And that is it. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Hornbeck.
Bear with me. I've got a couple of things. November eleventh, my husband's grandmother passed away, and I just wanted to give a little tribute to her because she was ninety-five years old. And she was a graduate of Slocum Truex High School in nineteen forty-eight and worked as a secretary at Monsanto before starting a family of her own with her husband, Robert Hedke. They were married for fifty-five years. And she is survived by her four children, eight grandchildren, and twelve great-grandchildren. So she was a wonderful lady. We had her service last weekend, and I just wanted to pay my respects to her. And also, the Trenton Educational Foundation held its fifteenth annual signature event on November fourteenth at one-nine in Riverview. It was a sold-out event, and all the proceeds will benefit Trenton Public Schools through grants to teachers and scholarships to graduating seniors. So that was a great night. It was an honor to be a co-chair of that event. And just a little plug, we are always looking for new board members if anyone has a free one night each month to donate to this, to the T E F. Also, congrats to the incumbents on your reelections. Super excited to work with you for the next two years. And a very special thank you to the DPW, who works tirelessly this time of year, collecting all the leaves to make sure we can always have places to park on the street and to keep our streets clean after the leaf pickup is over. Just driving through my neighborhood, I can, when they come by, it is a huge relief to everybody. And keep up the great work. Thank you very much. And that's all I've got.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Perugia.
Yes, I'd like to say Peyton, nice job, especially when it's not in your wheelhouse. You did it because it's the right thing to do. It's awesome. Absolutely awesome. Parents should be proud. I'm sure they are. I'd like to make mention of the last council meeting, the veterans made a wonderful presentation. However, this body didn't acknowledge the fact that Veterans Day was forthcoming. So I want to apologize for that and wish the veterans that served in this country the best on Veterans Day, and sorry we missed it. That's it.
Thank you very much, Councilman. Councilman Cabo Watten.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Peyton. Again, thank you for all that you've done on that project. That's just extraordinarily special. So thank you. Want to again congratulate Dora, Rick, and Timber on their accomplishments and coming back to council. Again, continue to look forward to working with you folks, and it'll be a good couple of next years here. Also, want to congratulate our lieutenants for their completion of staff and command, as well as our new officers. I think it's great that we have some, you know, additional faces. I don't want to say new faces, but additional faces here on the police department and continuing to staff and staff the department and support our community. And a selfless plug for, well, Kevin and myself. You know, we're looking at, we could get some winter weather coming up here in the next couple of weeks here. So, you know, this is Michigan. You need to slow down. When you see those plow trucks out there, whether they're blue, whether they're orange, slow down. Don't crowd the plow. Stay back behind them. Two hundred feet, it is a law. We just want to make sure everybody gets home safe. So besides that, Mayor, that's all I have this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you so much for the well wishes and the congratulations. Really appreciate it. And again, Peyton, wonderful job on the work that you all did. Really appreciate it. And also too, I would like to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, which is coming up this Thursday. And also, let's see, what else did I write down here? Oh, I believe we have the Small Business Weekend this weekend too. So please make sure that you jump on the DDA Facebook page and check that out in regards to all the small businesses and all the wonderful things that they're doing this weekend. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Bond Crooks not here, so we'll go to our other elected officials. Madam Clerk, do you have anything?
I would like to thank all my election, oh, all of our election workers again. We just have the best election workers. And I know I say it every single time, but I'm just very, very grateful for our election workers because they make everything so smooth on Election Day. Carl Brogley, I have to give a shout out to him. He is just amazing. He helps, he runs the whole show over there, over at the Westfield Center along with Mark Enright. And Mark's always there to help out at the end of the night, lock up the building, make sure everything's secure. Howard Hamis always does a great job. Howard's in the parking lot. It doesn't matter if it's rain, sun, sleet, snow. Howard is the most courteous person I know, along with Paul Haley, which is always here at the end of the night for us to make sure that everything is locked up, all of our eyes are dotted, all our buggies are crossed, everything sealed. And he doesn't leave this building until we leave the building. So thank you. Thank you all very much. I'd also mention that our next regular council meeting is just a week from today. So December first is our next council meeting. We will have a study session beforehand at six P.M. to discuss our special events. And our regular council meeting will be at seven P.M. And that's it.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Madam Assistant, do you have anything tonight? All right, Mr. Treasurer, McCullough.
Heck, yeah. I got something. Anyways, I want to thank Emily. Emily, you and Peter did a wonderful job hosting and running the signature event. Not sure, was it the fifteenth year? Fifteenth year of the signature event for the Trenton Education Foundation, probably netted over forty thousand dollars. And so congratulations. I'm proud of you and the group. You did a great job. Anyways, a couple of things that we're working on. First of all, there are tax bills that are going out, and you'll probably get them, should receive them in the first week of December. They're going to be in the mail by December first. And so they're due December seventeenth. Got a couple of, December seventeenth? February seventeenth. I'm sorry. I wrote that right in front of you. Anyways, February seventeenth, of course, because the normal date, the fifteenth, the fourteenth falls on a Saturday, and then we got, it's the next Tuesday. So it's Tuesday, February seventeenth. So thank you. I saw my controller over there shaking her head, saying, no, you screwed it up again. Thank you. The other thing is, we have a couple of things. The bougie events, people have asked, I know you, when is the bougie event? The bougie banquet will be having, and I know this is just before when the taxes are due, on February twelfth. And that'll be at the Westfield, the newly renovated Westfield. And there's going to be some great information because it is the State of the Union, a state of the city by the mayor. And it's also the city awards banquet for those that are significant honorees. So want to thank everybody on that. One other minor, it's not so minor, but because of the construction around City Hall, we're going to have to relocate the drop box. We're not sure exactly where it's going to be, but if you would, if you're used to dropping off your payments at the drop box, it's going to be at a different location. You can go on the website and locate where that's, where that will be. We're working that out as I speak. Anyways, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Treasurer. All right, any of our department heads have anything tonight? All right, now seeing anyone go to public comment now, anyone wishing to speak, please begin with your name and address. Direct all questions through me, and please let me your comments to five minutes. Howard up first.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Good evening, Mayor Mazepa. My name is Howard Hamis. I live at two-nine-two-one Maxwell. I'm here tonight to give a two thousand and twenty-five Boy Scouts of America scouting for food report. As I was here at your last meeting, which was November third, I reported that the Boy Scouts will be out the first weekend in November to pass out bags. That task was conducted. And then the following weekend, on November eighth, the scouts went back out and picked up the bags at the homes. I'm very proud and honored to announce to you here tonight, the Boy Scouts of America on Saturday, November the eighth, collected four hundred and eighty-eight bags. Four hundred and eighty-eight bags were collected here in the city of Trenton, bags of this size here. I'd like to also say thank you to, special thank yous to, we had some groups of people not involved in scouting that did help out in this event tremendously, and they have for years. The Trenton High School National Honor Society, students were there helping out. And also, we were also very happy to have members of the Trenton Rotary Club to help us out with this event. I'd also like to say through, we did our very best to cover as much of the city of Trenton as we possibly could. And I also like to say to the residents, thank you very, very much for your contribution, if you were able to contribute to our drive. I also like to say to the residents, if you were not able to participate in contributing to our drive, the post office here in Trenton will have their national food drive in May of two thousand and twenty-six. Usually that's around mid-May or so, I believe around Mother's Day or after Mother's Day weekend or so on. They usually send out a postcard to the residents here in Trenton. And I encourage people to help out them, just like they helped out us. It is very, very deeply appreciated. Also, the, this project is, serves as a learning and also service. People who aren't scouting and who aren't in scouting, they learn how important it is to help out your residents in the area that are in need, are less fortunate. And also, it's service. You have this opportunity to do a service project for your community. And this project was just not in Trenton, but it was also statewide. All scout units in the lower part of the state of Michigan had the opportunity to do this drive if they were able to. And I'm very happy to say that it was done very, very well. It was a great response. And in final closing, I'd like to say on behalf of the Maheken District, of the Michigan Crossroads Council, the Boy Scouts of America, Mayor Mazepa, thank you very much for having us again this year to conduct this project to help the, to help the food drive. And may all of yous here have a very happy, safe, and blessed, happy Thanksgiving, and in the holidays ahead. And we'll see you back in two thousand and twenty-six, and I'll be honored to be back as chairman.
Awesome. Well, Howard, thank you. We appreciate that tremendously. So thank you for all you continue to do and all the scouts. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Of course.
Good evening. Tom Kenny, one-five-one-zero, Yellowbrook Road. I just wanted to say congratulations to everybody on that side of the table over there. Looking forward to see what you guys have in store for Trenton. I want to say Happy Veterans Day. You know, we did this project, and it turned out pretty well. I was very pleased. I told Rick at the signature event that, you know, I think I gained a few angels out there cleaning those headstones. And I slipped and missed, and I would have been out there a while laying, and I don't think anybody came out there, but it all worked out. And I just want to say thank you to those sponsors that supported those kids. Those kids put a lot of work. It was cold, you know, and I think they deserve some recognition. I know Elliot's Bakery, Chris Davison did not hesitate one bit. I know Elliot's Bakery, Chris Davison did not hesitate one bit. As soon as the words came out of my mouth, she was ready to give. Kevin Sargent was a guy I sent to work with. City's very lucky to have him. Mr. Angelotti, great guy, expert heating and cooling, so if you need something fixed, you know, support those guys, you know? They believed in our kids, so I always take that to heart. The other thing I wanted to say is that, you know, I went to the TEF event, great event. Been going to it for years. I miss my buddy, the old MC, Mr. Bill LaFevere. I just, you know, every time I go, I always, I just kind of miss him not being there. So I just wanted to give a shout out to him. The other thing I wanted to say is that we were standing in line and at the signature event, and Congresswoman Dingle walked in. And I think as elected officials, I think, you know, sometimes we have a responsibility to inspire our youth. And the really cool thing was, as I was out there, I thought about John. Because when I was a little kid, John Dingle had a few words for me that really sparked my interest. And as the years went on, I had some great conversations with him, a lot of advice. And Debbie happened to walk in, Congressman Dingle. And she, I kind of told her about the project because what we were doing, and I thought about John a lot because he was, you know, a veteran guy. He cared deeply about his veterans. And so Debbie, at the end of the night, she, she made a little thing for my daughter, you know, a little video to thank her, what she did. I thought that was cool. You know, not everybody's politics might be the same or whatnot, but I, but I think when you can inspire our youth to encourage them, it's huge. So a lot of respect for her. I appreciate that, and I think my daughter really appreciated it. So I just wanted to let that out, so. And happy Thanksgiving to everybody, and thank you.
Round of applause again. Thank you, Tom. All right. With anyone else looking to speak? Don't see anyone on Zoom here either. I will entertain a motion to adjourn at 7:50, 8:00 p.m. Moved and supported. See you all next week, next Monday. Don't forget.